We are expecting, uh, Mr. Johnson, but we can mark them, uh, as late whenever they're ready.
Six twenty twenty four, where the commission meeting.
She moves up. Christian, yeah. Christian Harmon.
Here.
Christian.
Here.
You have four.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, please. By the United States of America, to promote, which stands one nation, really. This is all very interesting system. Thank you. First one, my work. I don't know about the error that causes for remaining. I don't remember that. They had no good thing over at this time. But somehow they moved that we approved the means that my first twenty way for. I found that collision. Through the chair, I abstained, I was absent during the game. Okay, I'll say it, thanks. All those appear.
All right, point and order given, we only have four people, can we approve something with three votes? No, okay, so I guess we'll have to defer that to another member to write.
Yeah. Right. So. We recommend we defer the minutes to the end of the agenda. Okay. We will. Uh, public comments for, hey, it's not on the agenda. Um, six, I have, um, and specific conflict of interest in. All right, I hope for our conflict, right? Uh, we can't, seven eighty. We'll see your recommending, consider, I recommend to actually adopt from the amendment. Twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one, house enrollment, general plan.
Yes, thank you very much. Vice Chair, members of the commission. Bringing to the housing element, re-adoption and rezonings. This is. Agenda for this item, both the objective, uh, background and discussion. Have a record in action, uh, have a comment if there is any, and then have, uh, questions and deliberation of the commission. The objective for this item, would be planning to adoption resolutions recommending that council, uh, adopt an addendum to the mini date declaration to, uh, adopt the amended twenty three, twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one, house government. And to approve associated general plan, specific plan and zoning map amendments for the site inventory. There was a supplemental packet, uh, that was posted on Monday, uh, so he, the members of the public, uh, who first looked at the packet as, uh, posting on Thursday, there were some minor changes made. Uh, it's all posted on our website, uh. The screen lists what the, what the, what the changes were, they were all minor for, uh. Four directions. I want to call out none of the changes affected things like arena numbers or more programs, uh, they were all more administrative corrections. It's easy to see on the screen, uh, I wanted to give, uh, a slide of the timeline we, we were on since planning commission. Regularly the adoption of the last version of the housing element, of the current one that we have. So in January twenty twenty three, uh, the planning commission and council held hearings and adopted. The twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one house element, we submitted to HCD, uh, please don't zoom. Uh, for purposes of this, look at the red rectangles underneath. That visually conveys the volume of comments and the, uh, volume of work necessary to address those comments. Well, unfortunately, the words can't be read, although, uh, the first comments we got, lots of work needed to be done. We then had a joint study session with the planning commission and council, uh, in October of twenty twenty three. Where we talked, uh, primarily about the programs. Uh, we wrapped all the technical changes up and resubmitted it March of twenty twenty four. And may have twenty twenty four, this second red bars, we still got comments, but far less. We addressed most of the things, uh, we resubmitted in, in July. And now as of this afternoon, uh, we actually did get preliminary comments. They CD. And it's very small, and they're, they're mostly, uh, wording changes, adding a little bit of collaboration on, uh, uh, certain programs, nothing that is substantive. As part of the resolution for this action, uh, where it, uh, has language that asks the commission to authorize staff to make uh, the changes necessary to respond to HCD between now and, and the council meeting. And, uh, so that's all, all, all wrapped into this. Again, the short list of items we got, we got, uh, they're about making a minor edit to the wording in a program, uh, adding a commitment for something we already intended. This relates to the environmental clearance of, uh, our fighting effort. Uh, uh, they wanted a stated commitment for our regulations and processes, our SROs. Specifically, they want us to commit that our, our regulations and process will encourage that. That's, that's, uh, that was like a two word edit that we had to make. For our capital improvements in our low resource areas, they wanted to, uh, make sure we add to our actions that we will apply for funding. We listed that we would have, have grants as one of the funding mechanisms, so we thought it was applied, but we're perfectly happy to add, add that. That's the scope and scale of the comments that we're working through right now, so I'm very optimistic that we're, we're in a very good spot. I know, sell the documents. There are. It's been reorganized to be, uh, easier to work through from a rich perspective, uh, there's a short uh, portion that we call the housing element that is now forty five pages, it has executive summary, it has the list of all the programs. That is the part of the document that staff and we, the most interested members of the public will bring to the most because it's kind of the guide to what we're doing over the next few years. Then there's a technical background report, this is over three hundred fifty pages. There's a lot of, uh, uh, details about what the existing situation was in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, when we started this. Uh, a lot of the background for why we have the programs we have, why the sites that we pick are the appropriate ones and so on and so forth. Extremely important, but not the types of things we're going to be looking at often. Uh, as, as we work on the housing element, so we should, we strategically move, uh, move those sections. The goals, programs and actions very much reflect what the commission saw in October twenty twenty three in the joint session, uh, with some modest additions. To respond to HCD. The arena strategy, uh, the background analysis, the housing, uh, needs assessment stuff. It's pretty much unchanged from January twenty twenty three, the, the document that was adopted in January twenty twenty three. Said that we did have to do a significant addition to the analysis of the sex in the court. Uh, the sites themselves, which same as, uh, I'll, I'll get to. When we look at the reading of numbers. Uh, the number at the top is unchanged, arena is thirty one sixty five, uh, the over the, over the planning period, right, and split into multiple income categories, but that's the, that's the total number. With, uh, approved projects and, uh, and projected ADUs, uh, we have credits of eleven hundred and thirty. Uh, now. Typically, you would take a total arena, subtract the credits and you'd get the remaining area. But there's a nuance that because of the two very large low income projects that, uh, once being built at seven seven thirty two, I mean, and one was approved at eight, eight forty San Bruno. When those are built, we will actually have exceeded arena for low income house. There'll still be, uh, very little, there'll still be moderate and there'll still be above moderate income, incomes that we have to have to deal with. That category, we're, we actually have surplus. Well, we can't apply that surplus to what we need to do in the remaining areas. So this was a, one of the key parts of, 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 of supplement. When you take thirty one sixty five and minus, uh, eleven thirty, you do not get twenty one, twenty one, uh, fifty eight, which the original staff report. Listed out, you actually have to go in and add back the surplus of the extra low income units that are in our prayers, so remaining the, the all the numbers on the screen are right, in, in the table are right, even though if you add things up in the retail table, you might think there's a mistake. We did have a note to that table that calls out why, uh, why this issue there. But the bottom line is our remaining arena, the, the, the units that we have to identify sites is twenty one fifty eight. The sites inventory done by sites for twenty five hundred and fifty two, so we have a buffer of three hundred and ninety four, which is slightly higher than, than the state recommends, the, the state encourages us to have a buffer of at least fifteen percent of our remaining arena, we're at like eighteen, so we're, we're in a good spot. And that's important because over time, some sites we identify are definitely going to build, some definitely won't build. Some other sites we didn't anticipate may also build. The reason the state wants us to have this buffer is there isn't a hundred percent certainty that exact sites we picked would build, so they want us to identify more than enough. So then, uh, it addresses certain, uh, instances that could come. When there reaches a point. We learned certain sites aren't going to happen. Or certain sites are built at less than well projected, and that buffer goes away. For any of the income categories, we have to identify ourselves, uh, that's the known net loss. Uh, we have a program for that, uh. So it, it's going to be something staff's doing, uh, in the background. And, uh, something that is part of the annual, uh, partner support that we bring to the planning commission, the, the council and, and so on. And this, this is the, the sites inventory map, uh, this is actually the, uh, there was one thing taken off, and that is and unfortunately can't see that at that scale. The eight and forty San Bruno project has been removed from the sites inventory because it was so it got moved to the credit scanner. It's still there, but it's, it's just in a different spot, all the other sites up here were, were sites in the, uh, January twenty twenty three version of the housing element were analyzed in the environmental analysis of the January twenty twenty three housing. So, um, from staff standpoint, uh, this is pretty much the same, and, uh, I don't think there are any issues with the sites inventory map. There are a number of the total, well, the, the total number of units identified in the sites inventory, which was also covered in prior slide, is twenty five hundred and fifty two. Of that number. Uh, one thousand ninety nine are identified on sites that the current general plan, specific by their zoning, don't allow those units. So, uh, required actions, uh, which we are pushing for along with the housing element re-adoption is the amendments to the land uses, amendments to specific plans and, and rezonings for themselves. Uh, these are the same four sites that we're talking about, or in, whether we call it four sites or three. Uh, two of the sites are owned by Alexandria, who's redeveloping, uh, at, at Tanfran. They're across the street from each other, we labeled them both as site twenty. Uh, one could argue they're two different sites. So whether you want to see it as three sites or four sites. It's these properties, as shown on the screen, are being changed, uh, to allow the units that are, uh, being, uh, that are in the house government. Specifically, what's being done is, and this is straight out of, of, of the resolution. We're mending the general plan to land use diagram for three of the four sites. Uh, to, to switch them over to the transit development. Land use category. Uh, the only site not being moved over is actually already in the transit or in the development land use category, otherwise we would be changing it. We're remembering the Tanfran plan development zoning, not the planned development permit or project with the, with the underlying zoning to bring the, uh, twelve ninety two Huntington site, which is across the street uh, into the Tanfran plan development. And allowing multifamily housing in that vacant site as well as the site that, uh, currently has, uh, the, uh, bottom unit. That's the site, the Tanfran project is proposing all the house units would go. We're so mending the US Navy specific plan to establish a new land use category, a very high density residential, up to hundred twenty years breaker. And we are applying that land designation to both the Russo dental building and, and the pet hospital. Then we are ending the zoning map, uh, to change Huntington site to the Tanfran PD and the, uh, the pet hospital site to T O D two, high density mixed use zone. So it's a lot of different documents, a lot of different changes. Basically, to make these sites able to have the housing units we said we're going to allow them to have. All the owners of these properties have, have been notified as well as, uh, a noticement to the, uh, kind of the owners around these sites. So that shifts from the sites inventory, it's now going to the goals and programs. I don't have slides that go through the specific programs, we can go through any, if the commission has questions. But I found it very interesting in making this slide. Based on the comment, based on the direction of the goal made at October twenty twenty three, uh, joint study session. We revised our goals, programs and actions to streamline them down to nineteen programs, uh, in in fifty four actions. HCD uh, was accepted our streamlining of the programs and actions. Uh, and ended up adding about a, uh, exactly a dozen. A couple to go one. I have a highest number to go to, which is the production of housing and provision of adequate sites, which is one of the biggest things that, uh, the HCD is focused on, one to goal three about, uh, kind of a good strikes, and three to the perpetually further for housing. Basically, they have two areas that we, that we didn't already have a program that made, uh, sufficient enough city commitment to addressing what is required in state law. But overall, those didn't add up to anything that we think is a major ask that we weren't already planning on trying to do. Uh, so we're very comfortable with, with the actions that we added, except HCD cards. As I said, I'm not going to go through what those are, those are in the document, if you have questions, happy to talk about it. So then we shift to environmental review, uh, as I stated earlier, the January twenty twenty three action had a comprehensive analysis done of all the American impacts of programs, the sites, and, and, and the new housing units. And, um, mitigated negative declaration was a dominant. When we look at all the changes that have been made since January twenty three. Uh, there's no possibility those would increase or, uh, result in that, because the site took the same. The numbers are actually, the sites inventory actually dropped a little bit because more got approved. The progress didn't add anything new, uh, uh, and therefore we prepared an addendum to the M and D, and that is, is part of your package. But those land use map changes, specific plan and rezonings, also, uh, are opposed to utilize the addendum to the M and D uh, because the rezoning is employer. What's in the house. And so it brings me towards the conclusion, um, overall, while, uh, legally, the healthy element should have been done in January twenty twenty three. We now have a document that is pretty much ready to go, except for a few minor uh, crossing of the Ts and dawning in the eyes with HCD. I also want to note, since January twenty twenty three, we've done a number of things that have implemented the housing element even while we were working on. Planning commission has played a major role in improving a number of projects. Key one being according San Bruno, because that's a lot of, I mean, their housing. But so the Glenview project, uh, the Crystal project, one of them. So that's all very positive, uh, the planning commission and council also approved, uh, housing element programs while streamlining the process. And staff's been working with the developer of Tanfran, where about a thousand of the twenty five hundred units in the site inventory is relying on. Formal application for tan terms expected in September. Right, and are in. Planning a joint planning commission council uh, agenda item to give a preview of those plans in the fall. Uh, we are, we have a schedule where we have a target date that the EIR entitlements will be completed by the end of twenty twenty five. Uh, and with, with that, the developer, although they can't officially put this in writing, they believe that borrowing and economic, uh, issue that's unforeseen because housing is part of phase one of the project. The housing unit proposed will be constructed within this, uh, planning period by twenty, uh, twenty thirty one, which is a, a big deal also in the eyes of HCD. So with that, again, we asked the planning commission to, uh, take these actions, want to add note to the record that the council action for the housing element sites will require an override of the ALC, uh, their land use plan, uh, noise compatibility. It's the same override that the council did for the housing element itself, uh, we know we have to do for this step, we're going to have to do it for the entitlement of the Tanfran project. Uh, but just letting all parties know that that's going to be part of the council later. But I wanted to close out with, uh, appreciation. This started in twenty twenty one, I was wearing this place at the time, I'm not sure. Many of the people on this slide were before you came over, probably own at the time, uh, but Frank Smith, our senior planner, has been a key role in getting us to this point. He was associate planner, not a new planner, but associate planner. Christie Wu was a major part of the, in the massive stuff, and such. We hired Veronica Tam and so to assist us, uh, their team, uh, played a key role in the HCD staff, uh, including a reviewer, didn't review our first one, so when, uh, he came on and reviewed a revised draft, he was starting from scratch. Uh, David allowed him help and, uh, very reasonable in working with, and of course, the planning commission and council, uh, got the first uh, health helmet in January. Brought us with feedback in October and, uh, all goes well, we'll recommend approval now at this meeting and my council will do that the same, I mean, always. So with that, uh, that brings us to the parts in the agenda for public comment, if there's any, and then, uh, go on to questions and any type of preparation.
Thank you.
Just right, and then, quite a presentation.
Uh, any questions for staff? Dude, if we can do the public comment, oh, sorry. Yeah, well, okay. Public comment, and saying no one here will close my end coming. Yeah. Being, uh, no, and the what's your second plus color comment? Listen. Right, I'm okay. But, uh, questions, yeah, mission.
Well, uh, just general comment, really appreciate the work, it's none that I've had since the last meeting, I had a few questions on it, which you had recorded me to, to go back and really re-derive his draft, and it's, it is right now, it's great, so I'm glad to see that HCD agrees with that, um. I was curious on the excess low income units, would we expect to sort of get credit for that in the next renewal cycle, that they'll assign us a little bit less than that because of the overproduction, so.
Okay.
With this point, um, that, that is a great uncertainty, uh. HCD themselves told us they think the next cycle is going to be very different. I admittedly, it, it needs to be, uh, uh. And that's not with the standpoint of wanting to make an argument over the number per se, but like, for example, most of this time getting this document to this point was providing analysis of why sites let's keep the buffer. And asked for just, just ask for a bigger number, the, the, sometimes that's easier than, so. We don't know, I don't I don't know what it will, one of the things that are going to be coming forward in the next year to talk about is do we adjust our inclusionary housing program to put more of an emphasis on the other categories that we need? Uh, uh, because if we don't, our surplus in, in the low income category is going to get higher and higher and higher, and other categories will not not, uh, be addressed as well.
Yeah, I guess I commented on that, I remember there was some discussion uh, four and six months ago, where we were looking at, at comparing some other cities' programs where, um, I think it was Mountain View that had kind of like a flexible credit system across the different categories. And I think where there was some discussion at the time that having that, be, because you could then uh, you could basically, once the framework of the program was in place, you could adjust specific credit values to, to address exactly this issue of balance, so it might be something interesting to go back and explore again.
Cause we, we have that in our programs, we're just being celebrating that part of it.
Yeah. Wonderful, um. Also in the area of, of beating our numbers, which is wonderful to see. Uh, slide nine, Tanfran was only listed for eight hundred ninety two units, we're expecting a minimum of a thousand from that, right? And maybe potentially, when they're talking about some of these flex zones and and adjusting their designs potentially significantly. Also, I guess we'll find out in September with somewhat more definite.
So the Tanfran site, the, the thousand units are, are the eight ninety two and the one ten.
Uh, oh, right, right, so the one ten is the affordable portion and the eight ninety two is the market.
At this, at this point, they're talking about the Huntington site being market.
Okay.
And the
Okay.
Right, being on, on the big property.
It's split into the two, Chris, that, right?
But we are hearing that the base number that Tanfran's coming in with will probably be over number we put in that element.
Percent of label, it's maybe not going to be much.
But there's, so of the plan that I'm going to be coming forward with is uh, a flexible plan that allows it to adapt to the, uh, to respond to the market, so if, as they're building, uh, the biotech is not very hot. They will have an alternative approach that puts more out. Um, uh, of, of, or which, which would then be able to help out other areas, markets.
Hmm. Great. Um, and my last quick question, when this, this density residential zoning destination, I don't know, we're going to discuss that in more detail in a different, you know, but I, just to get a general idea, we're basically, like, we're talking about five story apartment buildings with potentially some extra desk and stuff, but it's, it's been like a standard apartment, it's all there.
Yes, the, and, and the very high density residential is a land use category we're creating in the Navy specific plan. Right now, they just have a residential category, and a category sixty.
I see, I see, it's, it's that, that, that specific plan, you have this category within it, and it's still, okay, all right. Okay, you. See, so. Where did that come from?
So we. The because the existing land use designation uh for residential in the specific land. Caps at sixteen. We could have either changed that to allow it to go up to one hundred twenty minutes later. But that would affect more land. And that that sequel analysis would have had to study potentially that being happening on the other way. And the other land that we're talking about is land that already has pretty modern treatments on, so it's not going anywhere. Uh so with recommendation actually of our uh city attorney's office, just make a new designation. That is only being applied to the two uh site twenty one and twenty two. Uh so all of the name specific plan, the only two sites that have this are Russo Dandel and and Pet Hospital.
Okay, and so uh if I understood right, uh there's already a analysis being done, so. Uh higher density is not an option without additional work. Right? Either higher heights or higher units per acre or higher F P R.
Why the higher higher density land use category that we're pointing to twenty one and twenty two to more than just the land of twenty one and twenty two would require?
No, no, higher than this very high, so let me let me get at it, uh five story assortment, uh and you think to have retail is. It it just doesn't make sense, I think, in today's market, you wanna have podium plus a bike. That's the big word we're getting word shop, especially if you want retail, I, you know, what I'm seeing getting built right now is just that is. Usually like a one or two story podium, five stories on top stick. A rabbit, right, it's a rabbit, but it's parking garage, um I think that would be the most like attractive zoning that we could provide for that. We do that here or.
So we're we're working to stay within uh uh height limits uh uh approved by voter commission. Uh and and the the longer. Analysis of the T C P and just general regulations of the city is gonna look at what what is the minimum we have to allow? And then we'll go to the people and and. All right, show me, ask that question, but for this, we had to stay within what what the. What what the passion is allowed. Well, through a density bonus, you might be able to take the existing zoning and get to exactly what you're talking about. And and how we would love to have mixed use if. There, the only properties that we're aware of in the city that require the ground floor to be mixed used on is is in the in the downtown. Uh on on the on the main street, basically, everywhere else, we would, we would like it. Uh and in a in the next agenda item, there's a, there's discussion of what we could do to make it so that a housing about late to do so. But if if. Either of either the Pet Hospital site or the Russo Devil site came with all housing. Uh we would process it and and move before, and it came in with mixed use and still got the units, we we. We may be pleased.
Great. Great, um, and so next, but the. Okay, so we have some deadlines set in the table here, some of this year, some that year, um are released, like sales set deadlines?
Yes, well, we we identified them and we tried to chunk them out uh. We have some true spreadsheets that track out over multiple years every three. The state wants us to address most of the policy work in the first few years, so we uh. We identified the ones that we thought to San Bruno would most afford to do in the first year and made them in the first year. Then the second year, the next year, so uh for the most part, H C D was satisfied with what uh what dates we put in. Uh except they they would have preferred valid initiative also be sooner, uh but we still made the case. We want to build up. The the control arguments through uh. Long range, you're planning work announces, having having community meetings and stuff about uh what might be needed. Build that up so that it has the best chance of success. Sure, as opposed to just putting something on the ballot and hoping. That's literally the conversations we've had the most with H C D.
Uh, you know, I bet I said this before. This point in time, do you feel like those files now are still achievable with your current resources?
Uh even even in the last uh round updates, uh we tweaked a couple of the nicks to push some things back, because certain things were taken longer than we thought. But overall, with with the with the amendments that the commission and council uh. Proves for the process changes, with fee adjustments that council adopted. Uh very confident will not only be able to do the house comment implementation, uh as as as. We have uh have listed, but also the other initiatives that we talked about at the joint study.
What happens if we don't meet the end of the rule?
We don't meet them, uh we would have to explain in our annual report H D why we didn't. Uh I don't believe if one or two are missed, they're gonna come down and say you're violation, but if they see uh uh. A pattern of not meeting them, I think they could uh go so far as as to print to uh say, if you don't meet it by this day, we're gonna decertify you. Uh but again, optimistic that we're gonna be making enough progress that if one thing is taking longer. Uh or going where, so I I'm I'm not too worried.
Okay, and then we're gonna suffer outside risk like don't worry about it, yeah, thanks.
They would have to decertify for it to leave around.
Okay. Thank you, uh and what's. Uh so so two higher level things, one is uh. I think there is support for higher density and and sort of more than the programs calling for this time in place. Can can you say what what would be some actions that you would recommend that we take going forward? To do more than what's spelled out in here?
So when when it comes down to the. Like a commitments for the ballot measures and stuff. Staff admittedly put in the least commitment that we think is necessary. Uh we expect that what we what planning commission and council end up putting on the ballot will be more than what we're saying. Uh this was what was needed to satisfy H C D in addressing. All the issues that they're looking at, uh so. Uh I don't want the commission to view like the program five that talks about beyond the doubt initiative as that's it. Right, there are other things. Like the whole economic development parts of the joint study session, we just have council. That's in the house. Those are things we want to do, not just for housing reasons, but for economic development reasons, so. It it can include. Can include things along sites beyond the T C P, we can look at Bay Hill, we can look at Turner Center, get the office areas along Steve that are. Kind of low intensity. Uh really, all the major streets that aren't in single family neighborhoods, we think we should look at. And the T C P assessment is gonna give us some. Some criteria parameters, and then it's gonna be a case of uh future planning commission meetings talking about where we might apply those. Where we might propose to apply those. Along the boulevards and other.
So let's get back to our here, so you know, going forward, when you're starting to put forward these programs. Um you're suggesting that staff is going to take some action to. You know, send somehow be more creative, or set something that might go up above beyond it and propose that to the planning commission, is that what I'm hearing?
No, I'm I think I I'm envisioning, I'm envisioning that uh when we get the T C P assessment done. We're gonna bring forward, this is what the economic experts said, the least you need in order to ignore the pencil. Uh so. We think we should apply this to as much of the the development land again outside of the neighborhoods. But and there is interest in going beyond that. Then uh in planning commission. Planning commission thinks those type of options exist out there, planning commission should bring it up, I don't know, staff's gonna bring it up because. We're looking for the, hey, this is the least we need to do to make it even worth talking about. Uh clearly, if you have more, uh because. Unless we, there's there's magic line, as as you talked about, where you go out of the normal construction into more costly construction. Then that's pretty much of a seven story, just like you talked about, since the two plus the five. So that's kind of a. A a clear threshold, but. Somehow, this eight forty San Bruno project is going to find a way to fill ten. Uh not one hundred percent sure that they're gonna get the funding yet, uh but we they're they've applied and they left the devil, so. So planning commission might say, if we if the new. Level alone in the T C P is that set. Should there be some spots that maybe are tall? The key corner, key location here is there.
Sorry, without getting, let's stay high up on me, so. You guys are gonna be working on some plan, but you're just gonna stick to the minimums, you're not going to try to exceed. Um here here, here's what I've determined, it's said, you know, each time these things happen, uh you've you've worked so much on something. You bring it to the planning commission, and it's tough for us to say, you know, at that time, after you've worked a month on it, I can't go back and. Do it more.
So I see what I'm disagreeing with. I I think I can break my, when we come forward with findings of what the economic analysis says. We're not gonna spend time to develop a plan of hair, hey, here's what we should do, we're saying, here's the findings, here's a map of the city. These are the development areas, which do you think this should apply to, which do you think it shouldn't, which maybe should be more? So are we gonna come in with a, here's how we we would lay it out? No, I don't think so. But I think we're gonna, but the idea is we're gonna come out. The joint study sessions and such, I don't know that will we get feedback, how we can mission from the council and and to members of the public. As to where you wanna see things, then we will work on the details of of developing what that looks like. So the thing you're getting is not stat driven, it's it's this came from the council block and the management.
I think it's very good. For even when the study is started. Let's all talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, and maybe that all, so it's it's similar, no, it delves the details, but a lot of these programs are put with. Um you know, for example, uh I'm supporting that. I agree with supportive housing. Um and that's gonna happen in in the housing element. But uh I say I would not, I would oppose supportive housing next to an elementary school. So as the zoning code gets updated, I think we need to get a chance to see. You know, exactly, patients are. Wait, better for missing showing purpose restrictions, etc. That should be the proof. Um, we have, because of the airport, we have sort of a natural height limit. Um through large parts of the city and including a lot of where we're talking about, I don't town center, and I feel like. In some ways, just basically saying like, we don't specify any height limit other than what we have to for the S A A. Like, you know, like I personally, I'd be fine, just so we know. We don't, we don't have a height limit, the F B A tells us the height limit, you can do whatever they say you can do. And so like being more aggressive with like what we're proposing to do, uh. Yeah, got it.
And thinking. I very much appreciate the where that's coming from, and think from the sequoia standpoint, we do want to. Identify something, like it used to be that it was always about this, then most of the formats comes when I went from that, it's like, here's your height, I'll learn you to fit. That's fine, uh that lets us at least study in the E I R what could happen, so when the project comes along. That sequel analysis, if we don't, if we did say. Uh no height limit, not no hierarchy, oh yeah, there's no hierarchy. Uh either the sequel analysis will have the. Very extreme, or individual projects might need somewhere, so I think we can brainstorm as we go through it and uh. Work through these issues, uh how we can be as flexible as possible while still giving the property owner developer. Kind of the cleanest sequel path, because we're doing, I think we're doing, we have to say they're doing a great job of making our. Periodic process be quicker, but sequel is gonna end up being the huge, huge uh huge time machine.
Do you want to make a motion then, or? Or well, or adopt air resolution, is that right? You know, I should know this one.
Yes, from staff's perspective, if you, if you like the package that you have, and you said uh. Make a motion to adopt resolutions, I should have on screen. From a legal standpoint, we are good, if you want to change any of the things that Biden, we would just ask that explicitly.
Yeah, uh right, here we go, um I have a move that we. Not resolutions recommending that the city council adopt the addendum in the January twenty twenty three mitigating negative declaration. Number two, we adopt the twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one housing element, the findings of the housing element substantially comply with state housing laws, and number three. Approve the general plan specific plan and zoning impact, proven amendments for the housing element sites requiring rezoning. Anyone want to say it? All second, they remember motion second, we'll call it, please.
Question, sorry.
Hi.
Christian Harvard.
Hi.
Christian.
Hi.
Christian.
Hi.
Or we have. C J, both classes. Motion. Or zero. Or.
So we want to.
We still have.
Oh, you go through, you go separately, okay. So I'm uh me, I'm sure, and recommending city council adoption, mental cycle three. So about title twelve to create an administrative process for approval of certain types of housing projects.
Yes, uh I think we presented this one as well. The agenda is the same as the parallel, so let's get through that. Objective would be planning commission adoption of a resolution recommending the council amend title twelve for multifamily ministerial review process. But for background, there are two programs in the housing element uh that uh uh call for the city to adopt a ministerial process for multi family housing projects. With with the caveat that they apply twenty percent lower income units as part of the project. Uh this concept was first introduced uh the joint study session in our September twenty twenty three. With the draft ordinance was presented to the planning commission uh February sixth twenty twenty four. With other the other uh process improvement uh ordinances. This uh the ministerial ordinance was. Was deferred until the housing element is adopted, partly because it was going to refer to a housing element was. Was going to be amended, and we we didn't want the new housing element program to change it and then we had to come back and fix the ordinance. Also, there were a number of uh uh good questions and issues raised uh at at study session. That staff work with the city to solve. Package before you now reflects the. Preferences of H C D on how our ministerial process to work, uh as well as the recommendations of our attorney's office. One of the the ironic aspects of this is that. The concept you saw in February. Gave more options to a developer than Pat for you now. And the ironic part is H C D purported that way. Uh basically, the state state exists that if certain housing elements say that meet certain criteria. Basically, the state, state exists that if certain housing elements states that meet certain criteria. If they do twenty percent of their uh of the units as lower income units. Qualify automatically for ministerial offices. By, we made a pro, we proposed originally a process that would have allowed. Those type of projects to be ministerial without twenty percent lower income. The state wanted the two combined. The state wanted that, 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 if you want the ministerial, you give a little more of the, of affordability. So we changed our. Commission. So now it's. The only way you get the ministerial process is if you do the twenty percent lower income. So, uh, qualify project would have to be in a zoning district that allows multifamily housing. So propose this in, in also district. Uh has to comply with more standards, except as we know state law allows developers to create our standards. Uh, but chain wise, it complies with our standards and requires the minimum twenty percent lower income units. Us, that's, this is where HCD would want us to have this, this. Uh, this rule, so staff recommending it in this fashion. The. Because mixed use is already somewhat of a loss to a developer, uh unless you're a really large project. If staff view, if we have a process that could be ministerial, but if you add commercial, you're all of a sudden having to go back to a hearing. Well, then, do that. So we wanted to make it so that if a modest amount of excuse, reasonable amount of excuse could be allowed, so. Seventy five percent of the floor area of the project is residential. And that's growth floor, hopefully. Uh then, the mixed use product can stay in the ministerial process. We're gonna say, hey, you're mostly housing. You're doing a, a little bit of non-residential, that's great. Basically, if you have a four-story building, it's the first floor, all non-residential, you qualify. Uh, as was stated, people aren't really building four stories, they're going higher, so. Any project that made the whole ground floor residential would easily qualify. We think most likely it will just be portions of the ground floor. Uh, from a staff perspective, we're gonna encourage, if you're on a corner, put it in a corner, if you're on the main street, put it more on the main street, maybe on the side streets. Uh, we're not gonna really be asking for maybe the whole ground floor, because it's, it's a big impact. Another aspect of trying to make it more attractive is, there's a reasonable argument that if you have mixed use. Some of your, the retail customers will just walk there, there, but with some of the trips the residents might be taking. To services they want to take, because they could just walk, so we built inability to uh reduce their transportation impact. Uh. At this point. We don't honestly know what that's gonna be. But, uh, we want to start with this, we want to have, have conversations with developers, with developers who are interested in doing these type of projects. Learn more and regularly come back to amend the mixed use incentive. So at this point, the package. Is, is what it is, we think it's in the best shape it can be, uh it meets what HCD wants. Uh, the environmental review is, uh. Not reusing the identity of the housing element, it's using a separate exemption that we used for the uh, the planning process amendments. And this recommendation, we're gonna bundle with the housing element item at, at the council meeting. Uh, so our recommendation is adopt, adopt a resolution recommending the council adopted ordinance establishing the multifamily ministerial review process. Uh with that. Recommend a couple of comments, but if not, we can go straight to, which is the delivery sheet.
Right, twice, thank you. Do we have?
We do not have any, we never did get my word in order, we're not allowed to accept. Totally, very soon.
Right, okay, well, I'm happy to move, then we close the topic on it, on second. Basically, I, I can hold a comment as well as, uh, questions for staff. Yeah.
And, um. So clarification to the seventy five percent, uh it, it needs to include, uh, common area amenities, right, um, needs to exclude parking.
It, it would include parking areas within the building footprint, if it's assigned to the residential. That part here can count towards the seventy five percent.
When it's a.
Does bundle, we, it, it, it wouldn't count, uh, but I still would not.
That throws everything off, I mean, you can't do a study, you mean. So here, here's what I would propose, uh, you know, like, I like what you're doing, actually, I'd like to bend to the old way, where, where it's just ministerial without. The, the twenty percent. Uh, I understand. That's just me speaking. So I, I would update this a little bit, um. And, and I'd like to repeat that on this, so if they said. Um, something like the entire first floor is retail slash commercial. Or. Uh, up to seventy five percent residential, including common areas and amenities. Uh, the square footage excludes any square footage from parking. Something like that, so the, the, the concept is that, is to allow that retail commercial, if it's the first floor, just, just period, if it's the first floor. And then to make sure you clarify, includes amenities and common areas. And they exclude parking from the calculation, what do you think?
Yeah, there's, um. So the, the ordinance talks about it, includes lobbies, indoor and outdoor common areas, no ways to utilize, it does say parking areas. Uh, I see no problem with excluding the parking areas, uh, uh, the. I don't see a problem with saying you get the whole ground floor, but I think the seventy five percent is gonna provide that. Uh.
Swift, the, I don't know, that's, it's against creepy, uh.
So, I mean, I think we can add a, kind of that sentence the way it is, but then say, in all cases, the entire ground floor can be non-residential.
Yeah, so, anyway, it was very good, it at least made words miss, legal, legal proof words made. We're on the same page here.
So the changes, uh, uh would be that we would exclude parking area from the calculation of. The total floor or the calculated percentage.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we would say, in all cases, irrespective of the seventy five percent, in all cases, the entire ground floor can be non-residential.
That's, yeah, that's what I.
You got, and that, that, I see no problem with that working, and if there's interest. When we do get to the motion, uh, the maker of the motion just says, with the amendments that, uh, have been discussed.
Do you think the state is gonna be okay with that?
Yes, the state, the state doesn't have a position on the mixed use part, so long as percentage is at least fifty percent. So we're being a little stricter, requiring more resident, the, the state lets it be fifty.
Alright, now, and, and I know I threw it out. You know, and it all sounds nice, but. Uh, I'd like to hear from the rest of, the other commissioners on, on their thoughts. It's what we're doing then, for, for something to just go through now. Discussion, right, it, it makes those that projects ministerially approved, and maybe it's not one.
John, I, I, I think, I think they're in favor of this for, you know, like. The. Public input should be. In the much, you, I mean, it's the changing order plan, the general plan that, that, um. I, I think the value of public input is it's a broad shape of how we want the city to develop and not. Critiquing individual projects, I think, and, you know, and given the way state law has developed. You know, I mean, we have seen, okay, you know, the case where the public complains about an individual project gets what they. You know, or at least the, you know, select people with enough time to show up and complain at a, at a meeting. Get what they want and get the city in trouble for this thing, and get, you know, get us involved in lawsuits, so I mean, I really, I think. This should be the direction of all cities are moving, with their planning processes that. You know, you tell the public, we would love your input, like, we would actually, we would love it if more people showed up to this sort of meeting to talk about this big picture. And not, um, the individual projects, which are gonna be through a more ministerial process, as long as they be certain conditions, uh. In terms of public benefits and, and meeting the various general land information and so on. So I, I am strongly supportive of the direction of policy, really appreciated your bringing up the unbundled parking, um, it's something I have heard done before, and I didn't think of it in this case, so I, I definitely have a favor of, um, commissioner's. Amendment in that area.
Gee. So, I move that we adopt a resolution recommending the city council to adopt an ordinance establishing the multifamily ministerial review process. With the amendments, uh, just discussed in this meeting now.
So, sorry, my, 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 I'll call a question.
Vice Chair, yes, sir.
Bye.
Christian Harvard.
Bye.
Christian.
Bye.
Christian.
Hi.
For, I see, question.
We're in, we're on seven, considering recommended city council adoption of the proposed amendments, similar to municipal code, like twelve. Three amendments, section twelve seventy eight, zero, three, zero. Modifications and section twelve two hundred, zero, seven, zero, architectural review permits where.
Good evening, I'm the commission, still, I'm here, um, the agenda. For this item is similar to the past two items, so let's keep it off of the objective of the speed. So staff has identified two code sections in our municipal code that require minor amendments. The objective is for the planning commission to review what staff's recommended amendments. A bit of background, on one letter here, on March twelve of this year, twenty twenty four, San Bruno City Council, which is ordinance to. Improve planning permanent processes and made minor changes to the landing subdivision and zoning sections of our municipal code. On April ninth, twenty twenty four, the city council adopted these changes and these changes went into effect on July first. Uh, since then, uh, staff has identified that sections. Twelve seventy eight through thirty and section twelve two hundred seventy required amendments. But let's dive into those amendments, so getting off with section twelve seventy eight thirty, which is a modification chapter. Uh, the proposed amendments is to provide greater flexibility for staff at companies. These changes allow the director, in this case Peter Dooley, but to approve minor modifications to approve conditions of approval. As long as the change is aligned with the findings of the original project. And do not significantly alter the character defining features or operational aspects of the project. Additionally, these amendments redefine the major modifications to move changes to character defining. Features and substantive changes in an approved site plan that, that the project inconsistent with the originally findings. So this removes unnecessary language to clarify situations under which these modifications are of third nature. So overall, um, even minor, minor changes to additions require. Return to the decision body, uh which could lead to delays in fees. With these proposed limits, minor modification can improve more efficiently, ensuring that these changes remain consistent for the findings. And do not result in character defining changes, so making it more streamlined. Uh, the next code section is twelve two hundred seventy for architectural review permits. Uh, the reason why we are presenting this amendment today is to identify our tracking error. To clarify for ratio, ratio range that requires architectural new permit. For subs, for standard size lots, that's why I was referring, uh, with standard swells of less than ten percent, the base for area ratio is point five five. The recent code amendments intended that exceeding the base for area ratio of point five five could be for administrative architectural new permit. While exceeding a four area ratio of point six two would be by permission approval. However, this adopted text mistakenly did not require an architectural review unless the FAR exceeded one six two. So, the revised language now corrects this. Tagging errors to capture the original tenth of this amendment, so. With this amendment, residential projects with an FAR ratio of point five five to point six two would require administrative architectural new permit. And those that are above point six two would require planning permission. He was, I know, it's established for this proposed ordinance, so the recommendation for the planning permission would go directly to the city council over consideration. And with that, I will conclude with the nice recommended action, which is to adopt the resolution, right. That the city council amend the specified sections of the San Bruno municipal code as detailed in the staff report. And I'll move on to the public on me.
You're right, here, once we have gone on the bow.
No, I'm, I'm.
So I'm going to close public here. Second. Okay, all is fair. Yeah. Comments, please, uh, comments, questions, your staff. It's no, we're not in San Fernando. Okay, also, same. Second, we have a motion, second, I'll call vote, please.
Vice Chair, yes, sir.
Hi.
Christian.
Hi.
Christian.
Hi.
Commissioner.
Hi.
For, is there any question passes?
I have six, um, business. Service recognition, can we, yeah. So, uh, yes, uh, so this, or, I'm in the, the. Green Services Department is. Put together a, that, or, or, you know, members of the commissions. Come together to, uh, review and make a recommendation council on nominations for. Service recognition. Request is made to two many commissioners, uh, one, there'll be one meeting, with the September fourth, uh, at six thirty in the new rack. Uh, where you will receive nominations, receive a, uh, form of completion statement in the recommendation to the council. Later in September, can't wait, see your recommendation later in September. So staff's requesting. Two, two commissioners to be assigned to this, this one.
Can I ask what time, uh, what?
Six thirty.
We like.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be, you are on.
Because this is, uh, uh, like, it's very short term, yeah, because it's a, it needs to be done for a public, so I say. One of the other legislators. Also, this is predicted. September four, September four, Wednesday, September, come help there. Okay, so we will, uh. Pass that forward to your services director. And. For, yeah, I think. Unless, unless the other commissioner really wants it.
So we were chatting, yeah, no, no, sorry, I'm. Sorry, I'm pretty very lonely.
Because, always, never mind, yeah. Okay, that's all for this. Uh, how much for staff? And then, uh, we don't have any comments except that the next meeting is, uh, scheduled for seven, okay. The key, uh, comments, remember. Well, um, let's go back to a couple of minutes. One, 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 this, which, yeah.
Yeah, I I would move that we defer both of those minutes to the next meeting and hopefully go up to the board next time and register. And carry a motion, second. Was there? Anyone? You. It's crucial.
With that, we'll be adjourned to September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Thank you very much for your staff work.